This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, November 14th, 2017, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools, and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Mr. Schlusner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Chair Workman?
Here.
Yes, tonight we have the pleasure of members of the Elton Hills Student Council to lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. We are the student council representatives from Elton Hills Elementary School. We declare our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda, this is an action item. Mr. Munoz, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's one change. Item 5.01, construct tomorrow, has been moved to item 3.06, under announcements and communications.
Hold on a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Announcements and communication. 3.01, Mayo High School Honor Society Food Collection. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'd like to invite Claire and Teagan from Mayo High School. And would also like to recognize in the audience will be, I think in the audience, or if maybe they're coming up, will be Juan and Sarah.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me tonight. I am Teagan Holmes, and I am a junior at Mayo High School. I'm also the president of the club, associated and in the background of our Mayo High School Resource Room. We call our Resource Room the SOS Room, and it stands for Support Our Spot Rooms. Our goal is to help our student body get simple items such as toiletries, clothing, and shoes, and food. Our room is unique because it is easily accessible to all the students and is open all day, from morning to night. Currently, our, the Resource Room that we have right now has been around for about two years and is very successful. We help, we also have many other people who help out in our room. And if you would like more information, you can visit our website. Last year's statistics show that in October, we had 234 clothing items taken out of the room, and it follows through the rest of the months. And this shows that it's been very successful, and a lot of students are able to use the resources that we have provided. Other schools have also reached out to us wanting to replicate the model that we have shown in our school, such as Jefferson, ALC, ESC, Riverside, and Shakopee High School. Other organizations in our community have also helped us throughout these few years, such as the ones shown on the screen, as well as adult volunteers that help out in our room, as well as parents, and even our student body. We would also like to recognize our admissions for being super accommodating for us. We just got a new storage room, and the teacher's support, as well as the custodian's support and accommodations that they have given us. Thank you for having me.
Okay, hi, I'm Claire Schlusner. I'm the secretary of Mayo Honor Society, and I'm going to be telling you a little bit about one of the fundraisers we do for this room. It's called Trickle Contribution, and on Halloween, we dress up in our costumes and go around neighborhoods in the Mayo area asking for donations. We ask for clothes, food, anything that could be used in the SOS room. It has been very successful, and it's a ton of fun. Next year, we are hoping to get further membership involvement, and hopefully eventually, all of the members of the Honor Society will be involved somehow. Thank you.
If I may, before you go, yesterday at the Student School Board, one of the Mayo representatives had commented on SOS, and there were many schools beyond the ones that are listed there who expressed an interest. And I just wanted to bring it up to your attention to say that the effort you're doing is commendable, and will probably be even expanded beyond the current footprint.
Thank you.
3.02, Community Education Day. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Amy Icke, Executive Director of Community Education.
I think there's something coming up for you. There we go. So even though tonight is not the actual day, we wanted to share with you that our governor proclaimed a statewide Community Education Day last Thursday, November 9th, and this actually goes with a national celebration of community education. And as you know, community ed in this district reaches everyone from prenatal and birth all the way through senior adulthood, with what you might call the insulation around the K-12 pipe. All of the pre-K, the after-school, adult learning, all of those things fall under community ed, as well as community use of our school buildings in non-school hours. So just wanted to share with you that we're celebrating the opportunity to have community ed in our community and to be able to serve our members. So thank you.
Yes, I would let the board know that our community education program is well-known across the state of Minnesota and spoken very highly of. And I, you know, I've said this many times, that what we have going on specifically at Hawthorne Education Center is a, really a hidden gem. The variety of programming and opportunities that we provide members of our community at the Hawthorne Education Center is quite amazing, so thank you for all your work, Amy.
3.03, Recognitions. Mr. Munoz?
Okay, I have a couple recognitions I would like to address. First of all, I received a letter from the Minnesota Department of Education, and I, to be honest with you, I was not aware, but we had several of our teachers participated in the Assessment Advisory Panel for the Minnesota Department of Education this past year. It was Amy Neal, Cindy Teedman, Sherri Motel, Michelle Bacon, and Anne Neal participated throughout last school year and served on the Assessment Advisory Panel for the Department of Education. Also would like to talk about, this week is American Education Week, and public schools are the cornerstone of our communities. Every day, we welcome students from all backgrounds, abilities, and incomes, and each of us plays a role in ensuring our schools are open to all. During American Education Week, it's time for us to show our public school pride to the world. American Education Week, November 13th through the 17th, is an opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. American Education Week serves as a tribute to the team of people who work with our students, everyone from the classroom teacher, and the bus driver, to the cafeteria worker, and administrative staff. Tonight, we honor and thank all Rochester Public Schools staff for the work they do every day to make sure that our students are safe and ready and able to learn. Please join me in thanking our staff for everything they do for our students. Lights On After School is a nationwide celebration focused on the importance of after-school programs. Research shows that young people who regularly participate in after-school programs attend school more often, do better in school, and are more likely to avoid risky behaviors. These programs also support working families and prepare our next generation for success. On October 26th, 12 people across Minnesota were recognized for their ongoing work to enhance the quality of after-school programs and improve access to them for all youth. The occasion was the first-ever Minnesota After-School Champions Awards, presented as part of the 18th Annual Lights On After-School Event. Our very own Amy Icke was one of the practitioners and community leaders who received the After-School Champion Award in Rochester Region from Ignite Minnesota. Amy won the award in the community leaders category. She was nominated by the Rochester Youth Program Network members. She truly is a champion for after-school opportunities for students. Please join me in congratulating Amy.
I feel like I was just up here. I had the opportunity to attend Lights On After School in Minneapolis, to receive the award, and actually made a whole bunch of new Twin Cities connections to come to Rochester, so it was a dual purpose. But thank you, and I thank the Youth Program Network members. We have over 100 organizations in Rochester that provide after-school programming, and we network together and do professional development that matters to all of us, and try and make our processes better all the time, so I appreciate this. Thanks.
3.04, Above and Beyond.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Are you ready for that?
As you're aware, we have the Above and Beyond recognition, and we do this every month. I'm going to give you a couple examples, and I think, yep, Melissa's here, we're going to draw our winner. If you remember, we started a new practice last month where we draw a winner. These are the individuals from across the district that were recognized. It says November, but it was also the previous month because our system broke down, and I didn't get all of the names until last week, so we brought them all forward tonight. A couple examples, the first one is Joshua Klingfuss. He's from Sentry High School. And here's what the individual wrote about Joshua. "Our school started the year without one of our special education teacher positions filled. Although a sub was hired temporarily, Josh knew most of the students, and even though his plate was full, he took on the daily responsibility of a double caseload of students. He kept that Resource Room functioning during the critical first few weeks of school. His efforts truly went above and beyond, and were so appreciated." Second one is Jeff Cappers, the Transportation Director. "Mr. Cappers deserves to be recognized for his do-whatever-it-takes mindset in supporting our students. Throughout my years of working with Mr. Cappers, I have been nothing but short of impressed with his commitment and dedication to the students and staff of Rochester Public Schools. Thank you, Mr. Cappers, for always staying positive and keeping your focus on what is best for our kids." Congratulations to all the winners, and then we'll pick our winner.
Rochester Public School Foundation, one of our missions is to support Rochester Public Schools staff, and I think this is a great way of rewarding excellence, and so one of our today's recognition recipients will receive a gift card from us to a local business.
Chris Javol?
Give it.
Give it. Chris.
Give it to Chris.
Way to go, Chris.
He says, "Give it to Chris."
Thank you.
3.05, School Board Committee Assignments Update. Do any board members have any updates they would like to report? Mr. Schlusner?
I have a couple committee assignments I'd like to update. The first one is the, from the Alston County Youth Commission. Meeting was last week. It was interesting where there's, they spent a lot of time talking about student mental health. And in this particular case, they're actually asking how the curriculum is developed for the health instruction within the schools. Because from what they've seen, and in their experience, what they have received at the Youth Commission, is a little bit better than what they're receiving in the health class. So they'd like to know how they could get involved in helping steering what they feel the students need for mental health curriculum within the health classes. I thought that was really interesting. And then there's also an update from the Children Museum of Rochester. The other update I have is from the Rochester Public School Foundation. As everybody knows, they had their large Boo Fest event this last Halloween, and it was a great success. It was great to see the growth of the program and the community support for it. It sounds like they already plan on having it back next year, so save your costumes and be prepared to have it again. It is a great event. And as a result of that, the foundation is going to be having grants this year. We're actually going to be meeting on Friday to figure out the logistics of how we can solicit applications for the grant requests from the schools, and we'll get together and bring those. We welcomed a new board member to the foundation, Donna Griesen. She's been very involved within the schools. She would be an outstanding board member for the foundation. The foundation is still looking for more help. If you're an attorney and need something to do, feel free to volunteer with the Public School Foundation. That would be greatly appreciated. And it looks like the grants this year will be somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000, yet to be determined. But again, it's, as Melissa said when she was up here, the Public School Foundation does a great job giving back to the students and staff of Rochester Public Schools.
Mr. Barlow?
I'd like to comment regarding a training opportunity that Directors Seelinger, Workman, Marvin, and myself had opportunity to attend on the 8th of November, put on by the Minnesota Department of Education, Office of Indian Education here in Rochester. Just great information that I think sets an ongoing dialogue and foundation for increased awareness and ongoing educational support for our students. And the district liaison, Guthrie Capasala, I left with a newfound awareness of, again, being reminded of the things that you don't know, you don't realize you don't know. And so sometimes it takes a training event. Scholars, those who have lived the life, know the life, who are fully educated regarding aspects of the life, in this instance, of the American Indians. It was quite useful, and I want to commend my fellow board members for taking three hours out of your Wednesday to participate in this.
Any other comments in there? Ms. Seelinger?
Thank you. So I have a few. The Area Council of PTSA met last week, and new this year, we've kind of changed our process, and so we have a board meeting from 6:30 to 7:00. At 7:00, we have a district representative come. I mentioned last month, Janie Gibson came from Curriculum. This month, Carl Bachan came. We enjoyed having Carl, and he talked about the teacher evaluation program. I think it was great information for the few of us that were there, but talked about the process and how that was developed and how it's going forward. And so we really appreciate the district's commitment to PTSA to help bridge the gap in communication about what goes on in the district and what we can take back as PTA members. So thank you, Carl. We really appreciated your visit, and look forward to seeing some of the rest of the Cabinet Superintendent going forward. Also, I attended the Family Engagement Meeting this week. That's a great group that meets monthly under Julie Ruzak, our family and community liaison for the district, I guess. We had an ed camp this month. We tried this last year, and we're going forward with it again. And so we had four tables that we could move in between, and those four tables were focused on, one was Description of the Step Into Learning. They had a bishop this year, which we heard about here at the board table. Another was at Jefferson, where they had a mindset night, different than having a math night or a reading night. They had a Positive Discipline Table presented by Amy Baker from the parent program. And then Elton Hills presented on communication efforts and apps and programs they use to communicate with their parents. So all four were very interesting, and I think everyone in the Family Engagement Program was engaged while we were at the meeting. Also wanted to mention, I don't know if it's on Mr. Munoz's list, but I'll take it here, that upcoming, the district is having a Family Engagement Night, open to all. It will be Thursday, November 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at Sunset Terrace. This is also listed on the district website. And including dinner and childcare, the night will talk about the envoy strategies that we've been talking about here at the board table, hearing about the professional development. So this is a night for parents and community members to hear more about those efforts in the school, and then how we can take those home to our own kids.
Chair? There was one, there, committee update I wanted to mention, and it deals with the Gateway Committee, met last evening. And I was so impressed with the individuals on this committee, and, but more so the mission. One phrase stuck out in my mind, and that was, "They exist to an active pursuit of high-quality education, not for some, but for all." And that just really, you know, marinated with me for some time, because sometimes we view committees, advocacy groups, as being only interested in certain group, and what I took away was Gateway is interested in high-quality education for all, each, and I'm glad to be serving as a board rep to that committee.
Ms. Marvin?
Our community-focused team continues to meet. This is a group of people, some of whom have children in our schools and some don't, but all of whom are really concerned that every single child in Rochester gets an equitable chance at doing the best he or she can. My understanding is that that team is planning on presenting to the school board sometime next month about what their plan is, and it's an exciting group to be involved with. I might also, one of their planning team members is here, back right now, and Amy Icke, as if she hasn't been recognized enough tonight, also has been an invaluable part of that group, because she's the one who takes the notes, who ensures that there is a place to meet, and does a lot of coordinating, a huge amount of work, to keep things running smoothly. Thank you.
All right, now I'll talk about mine, once I went to. I substituted for Ms. Seelinger at the CCIAC WBWF Committee Meeting.
Oh, that's a good one.
That's a very good one, and there's a slash mark in there after the third C, if you remember and all that. The CCIAC is the Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee, and WBWF is the world's best workforce. And Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Janie Gibson, led the presentation, and I learned so much about how many free college classes there are available to students. It was absolutely amazing. And that for some CTEC classes, for $100, you can get three credits. Was that $100 per credit, or $100 for three credits? From the University of Minnesota, which if any of you have attended there, you realize that's quite a bargain. So she did spend some time talking about the course guide, which I believe is on for tonight, so we'll hear more about that then. And that was pretty much the highlight of it. We had a very cozy, intimate group, and we would really like to expand it, so the room is entirely full. So the next meeting is on January 15th, and it is out at CTEC. So I hope that more people will be able to attend. If the rest of the meetings this year are going to be anything like the first year, it's just going to be stellar. So thank you, Ms. Gibson, and your team for making that presentation. The Policy Committee met yesterday, and just a little bit of news on that front. We will be establishing monthly regular policy committee meetings, and in addition to reviewing the policies from, that have language changes from the Minnesota School Board Association, and those that have any legal changes, we will also be starting a systematic review of all of our policies, and we hope to get through about a third of them each of, for each of three years. Ms. Marvin, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
No? Great. Also, I will be attending the Delegate Assembly, Pre-Assembly Meeting this Thursday night, which will be an opportunity for us to review some of the legislative agenda items that have been put forth from school boards across the state. Our Delegate Assembly Meeting is on December 1st and 2nd, so I will be reporting to you on that outcome on our December board meeting on the 12th of December. I also attended the AMSD meeting last Friday, I think it was last Friday. There is an annual conference for that. It's a half-day on December 8th. Board members, I believe you've gotten information from Ms. Edgar on that. And without going into a lot of detail, they did have, present their legislative platform, which is here somewhere, to, and there are just a few items which I'll mention, to stabilize education funding, to reform and stabilize the Teachers Retirement Association Fund, to increase and diversify the teacher workforce, to enhance taxpayer equity, to reduce mandates and enhance local control. Mr. Smith, I think that would appeal to you particularly. And to ensure safe and modern school facilities. So the AMSD is the Association of Metro School Districts, of which Rochester's been a member for the last couple of years. Because the metro area schools have a larger population than our surrounding schools, some of the issues that we have are more shared with those with larger school districts. So our next meeting, I guess, is coming up on, is there one before the 8th? On the 1st?
Yeah, I have a legislative, I have a legislative meeting this Friday, so I'll be up there for that. And then we have the annual meeting in December, early December, and then we'll be at another board meeting in early December as well.
Anybody else have anything else?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Munoz?
Yeah, just a quick update. Hopefully, board members have completed your thought exchange engagement.
We had a very cozy intimate group, and we would really like to expand it so the room is entirely full. So the next meeting is on January 15th and it is out at CTEC. So I hope that more people will be able to attend. If the rest of the meetings this year are going to be anything like the first year, it's just going to be stellar. So thank you Ms. Gibson and your team for making that presentation. The policy committee met yesterday and just a little bit of news on that front. We will be establishing monthly regular policy committee meetings. And in addition to reviewing the policies that have language changes from the Minnesota School Board Association and those that have any legal changes, we will also be starting a systematic review of all of our policies, and we hope to get through about a third of them for each of three years. Ms. Marvin, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
No? Great. Also, I will be attending the delegate assembly, pre-assembly meeting this Thursday night, which will be an opportunity for us to review some of the legislative agenda items that have been put forth from school boards across the state. Our delegate assembly meeting is on December 1st and 2nd, so I will be reporting to you on that outcome on our December board meeting on the 12th of December. I also attended the AMSD meeting last Friday, I think it was last Friday. There is an annual conference for that. It's a half-day on December 8th. Board members, I believe you've gotten information from Ms. Edgar on that. And without going into a lot of detail, they did have present their legislative platform, which is here somewhere, to, and there are just a few items which I'll mention, to stabilize education funding, to reform and stabilize the Teachers Retirement Association Fund, to increase and diversify the teacher workforce, to enhance taxpayer equity, to reduce mandates and enhance local control. Mr. Smith, I think that would appeal to you particularly. And to ensure safe and modern school facilities. So the AMSD is the Association of Metro School Districts, of which Rochester's been a member for the last couple of years. Because the metro area schools have a larger population than our surrounding schools, some of the issues that we have are more shared with those with larger school districts. So our next meeting, I guess, is coming up on, is there one before the 8th? On the 1st?
Yeah, I have a legislative, I have a legislative meeting this Friday, so I'll be up there for that. And then we have the annual meeting in December, early December, and then we'll be at another board meeting in early December as well.
Anybody else have anything else?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Munoz?
Just a quick update. Hopefully, board members have completed your thought exchange engagement process. If not, I think it's still open for a couple more days, I do believe, one more day. We did send out a reminder email for those who have not completed it yet. The early feedback is that the people are enjoying the engagement they're having with each other within the process. So, matter of fact, one cabinet member this morning shared that a relative of theirs had, just couldn't, kept having to check and get engaged all day today, so, or all day yesterday, and couldn't put it away. So, not sure how much work they got done on that, but they sure got a lot of engagement on our thought exchange. So, once we get the results of that information, we will share that with the board and this way the community can be aware of the results of that engagement. And then today, we are, we started planning, our next engagement through the thought exchange will be on the school calendar for the 18, 19 school year. We anticipate sometime in January, we will roll that engagement out and put out a calendar or two and ask people to engage on the two different calendars, not vote on one or the other, but to provide input on the two different calendars. And then hopefully, late the second January board meeting, we can have the results and bring a calendar to the board for approval. So that's, so far, the thought exchange has been positive. We'll see, we have one more day, and then, like I said, we'll get the results and share them with the board in the near future.
3.06, Construct Tomorrow. This is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, if you remember, a few meetings ago, I talked a little bit about this event, and I'm going to have Janie Gibson, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, kind of get this set up for us. And then we have many individuals that participated in all of this will come forward and introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about the date.
All right, so as they're getting set up, I'll just share with you that on Friday, October 13th, Century High School hosted the Construct Tomorrow event, and it was hosted for nearly 600 students that represented 12 different southeastern Minnesota schools, including our three high schools, John Marshall, Century, and Mayo, as well as the ALC. This event highlighted careers in the building and construction trades and included hands-on experiences, as well as post-secondary information related to each of the fields. So here to share more with you are Eugene Grover, who is the President of Southeastern Minnesota Building and Construction Trades Council. We have Eileen Strabala-Bachus, who is a counselor at Century High School. We have Doug Batzoff, who is the teacher at Century High School, as well as over at CTEC with our construction program. Maggie Hungerholt comes to us from the math department at Century High School. And we have two of our students, Junior Logan Lopez and Senior John Smith. So they're going to share more about the date.
Okay. Thanks for having us. It was a great experience to put on and put together, it was a great partnership with Southeastern Minnesota Building and Trades. Maggie and I and Eugene had been working on this for probably over two years. I went to Construct Tomorrow downtown, and with it being downtown, it was hard to get a lot of our students to go to it. This is probably about three or four years ago. And so I asked Eugene if there's a possibility that he could do this at our schools. And he said there was a possibility. So then I talked to Janie Gibson, and she said we could do it. And then I talked to Chris Fogarty at our school, and he said we could do it. So Maggie and I and Eugene started planning. And it took a lot of time to plan. We had a mini, a mini version of it last fall, when we had a trades fair at our school or just a career fair. And then this year, we wanted to do more in-depth. We wanted our kids to have the opportunity to experience more, to have hands-on, to have the connections. So Eugene brought people together from the community and helped us put it together. We had our four public schools, plus we had a number of other outlying schools, so it was a huge community partnership. We had 12 high schools involved. We had Mayo, Triton, Century, Hayfield, Kingflyn, Blooming Prairie, Dover Yoda, Red Wing, John Marshall, Byron, Pine Island. So it was just an opportunity so our kids could have that experience of the trades. They could take part in it, they could be exposed to it, they could learn about it. Go ahead.
There are many opportunities in the trades. Most of our students at Century, of course, do go to college and they do very well. But there's a segment of the population that would benefit from looking at the trades as a career. And so we, Eugene and...
Eileen?
Eileen, we've been working on this, just to bring them in. And it was a wonderful experience for all these kids to come in and actually be able to try some of these things out that they've never seen before. Some classes came down that actually aren't specifically trades-oriented. Some of the engineering courses came down.
Interior design came down. A lot of the math students came down. Other students were free to come down during the lunch period because we had it on our campus. And that's one of the things we wanted to happen. We wanted to allow more kids to take part in it.
Yep. And we're also working next year to expand this a little bit more, to include more with mechanical engineering and civil engineering and those types of trades. And Brandon McCaffrey would like to have more of a way to highlight the activities at CTEC that can be brought in and maybe draw some more students in through it. So we're going to open it up next year to ninth graders, so it will happen before registration so they can start seeing what we have to offer that's related to these fields. So Eugene put in a ton of work. It was amazing to see all the different activities the kids can do in the simulators, so...
Yeah, it was a great experience, and I have to thank everybody that was involved. Couldn't have done it without the support that Century High School and their staff, and I thank you for allowing for that to happen. I think we, in my opinion, it was the best one that we've had. We've had probably three or four in the area, some smaller ones. But the positive feedback that I've received from all the apprenticeship directors and the engagement that the students had with those apprenticeship directors is what's key. That's, to see them that involved in it, hands-on, they're laughing, they're joking, they're understanding what they're doing, they get a little bit better feel for it that this is something that they don't have to be afraid of, they can definitely do it. They're lifelong skills you can gain through any one of those various trades. We're all do-it-yourself type of people, so it was a wonderful experience, and I'm looking forward to putting more time and effort to make it better next year.
From my perspective, there was, there was three sessions, and the sessions would last two hours long. And there was different students. For example, we had Mayo High School, the first session, with several of the outlying districts. And then Century was in the middle session, and then JM was in the last session, with each session having additional schools from the area. And what was neat about it is that Eugene, these individuals were actually, they teach also as part of the, as part of their particular disciplines. So they're good with the teaching aspect, and that's what I really enjoyed. They were, you know, they would even tease the kids, saying, "Oh, come on, you can do..." And they were having fun with it, which was great. And I was hesitant at first, thinking, "Oh, what are they going to do with two hours if this doesn't work in a session?" And what was neat is these guys were going around and they'd go back, "Well, let's go back over here again," because it was something that was, it was giving them the opportunity, which, as a junior, as a senior, you probably don't know exactly what you're going to do yet in life, but to have that exposure down the road, they're going to draw from this. You know, it's a lifelong learning process, and this really sets them up for a great experience that, you know, a couple of years from now, they may say, "I really think what my experience was with one of you individuals that was at the high school." Need to bring them back to it, so, thank you.
How are you guys doing?
Doing good.
John, what did you think?
It was a lot of fun. I came in fairly sure that I was going to go into the trades as an electrician, and just talking to them at their table kind of reassured me on what I wanted to do and that I did want to go into that. And, yeah. I came in not knowing what I was going to do. I've got a pretty good, I'm pretty sure I'm going to go down to the trades, trades path, and that kind of opened up a lot of possibilities for me, a lot of different jobs I could look at, so...
I shouldn't point out, sorry. Right. Through our trades, we do have state-accredited apprenticeship programs, and that's the instructors that Doug was alluding to. Those courses that they offer, the training that they offer, is no cost to the new member. And so it's really, you earn while you learn. You have your wages, your benefit package, your retirement, all the above, healthcare. So that's always an attractive point, especially coming out of high school and kind of wondering which direction you're going to go.
Working with Eugene was really good. He was a great, great community partner. The trades, they paid for all the busing for the schools to be able to go there. They paid for salaries for the teachers to come. So those, every barrier that we could think of, he said, "It's okay, we're going to take care of it." So it was just great because there weren't a lot of obstacles in our way, so it was very cool.
I have a quick question from Strabala-Bachus. You mentioned something about ninth graders earlier.
Correct. This year, we chose not to have ninth graders. We weren't sure if it would work or not with ninth graders. But we decided for next year that we would, that way it would expand it. It would give them more opportunity to career plan and more exposure.
Not trying to jump ahead too far, but I know one of the things that we've talked about is kids at the middle school level having possibly more exposure to this kind of thing, so...
We've talked about that, too. And we thought we would just do one year at a time. So we would do ninth grade, see how it would go, and then we would work out a plan for the eighth graders, because we did talk about it.
Looking, looking ahead, you know, this is just, I think it's just a wonderful opportunity for students who are interested in doing something hands-on, actually having the opportunity to experience doing something hands-on rather than just maybe reading about it. So, thank you so much for this. Mr. Smith?
My kudos to everybody for working together. This is a big area, a big area of need, you know, we're going to be building a lot of buildings around here in the next 20 years, and the demographics aren't necessarily in our favor, so anything you can do to work together as a team, get people, get kids exposed to this opportunity, like you said, earn and learn at the same time, it's a great opportunity for the kids. I guess for you, Eugene, the bottom line will be, do you, you know, at the end of the day, do you get kids going into the, doing in the trade? It's probably a little too early to tell that yet, but it looks like you got a couple of kids here at least thinking about it. Starts there, and then they'll follow through, you know, it looks like we'll be in good stead. Because this is, we have a tendency to think that all the kids, all our kids, you know, should go to college and go and get their four-year, their... There are some great careers for kids that, you know, might end up making more money than they would, they went to four years of school and came out with debt. So I would encourage all students to take a look at all these opportunities because you might be surprised, they're not exactly what you think they are, and you actually might enjoy the work. So, anyway, kudos to all of you for what you're doing, it's a good thing.
Mr. Schlesner?
You had mentioned that there, you have trained teachers for the apprenticeships. I know right now in our high schools, there are courses offered, say, through the University of Minnesota for high school students. Is there anything for the trades fields that students can take in the high school years that would count towards the apprenticeships?
That's something we're working on.
We are, we are working on that, seeing if we can align them closer. And Janie can probably answer that question better than we can. But we've been trying to see how we can pair the things, how we can get maybe the seniors or the kids that are 18 to be able to have that mentorship or... So we're just exploring a lot of different opportunities. Do you want to say anything? Okay.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Barlow?
Kudos as well, and part of what is called World's Best Workforce does acknowledge the fact that there are those who will be college-bound, yet we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the need for others to be career-ready. And so I definitely applaud this effort. I, earlier this afternoon, ran into someone who works at Workforce Development, and they were speaking of a carpentry program that will be offered in January that allows students, or anyone actually, from what I understand, to enter the six-week program, be paid, learn the skill, and become a part of the career path of trades. And so, I was just curious, Eugene, how do you see potentially the Rochester Public Schools or, well, Rochester Public Schools being more supportive, the council in general in terms of helping meet your needs? Because as Mr. Smith alluded to, it's widely known that there are, in the trades, not enough individuals stepping forward to say, "You know, I want to pursue that," whether it's due to lack of knowledge, access to Construct Tomorrow forums, or... So is there anything you think that we could do to maybe help that process along?
At this point, I think the groundwork has started. I mean, what we've done here is, was great. And I have, you know, obviously met with Mr. Smith on a couple occasions, and we've had those discussions, and he's been very, obviously, open to anything that we're looking at on that front to help further any type of relationship that we can with the Rochester Public School Districts. So, in a nutshell, I think it's a work in progress. Counselors, if there was a little more networking I could do with counselors, you know, obviously, they see more of the students have their fingers out into kind of the heartbeat of what's going on with some students, and they might be able to direct them different paths. Industrial arts teachers. I guess, just more communication on that front, and that goes on my end, too. So I think that would be a good, positive start.
Yeah, thank you. You know, the Building Construction Trades Council's been a great partnership. You were on board at the beginning when we were working on the CTEC building, and you've stepped up in many ways to help us with that, and thank you for this. And thanks, all of you, for organizing this, because I know it's quite a challenge. I mean, even just to take on our high schools, but to open it up to other districts is, even makes it more difficult. So thank you for all of that work. What I really appreciated about it was, it wasn't just guys sitting at the table and you come and talk to them, you had them engaged in doing hands-on activities. And I think that's really what we need to do. We need to expose kids to those things and then educate them on what's available to them. And then they can make what's best decision for themselves based on the information we provide them. And, you know, I think unfortunately, sometimes, my kid's son's a perfect example. He went into college and thought he wanted to be a civil engineer, and luckily, one semester, he had Thursdays off and connected with my neighbor who was an industrial designer and spent a semester working for them on one day of the week and changed majors. Too bad he didn't do that a couple of years earlier. But, anyway, I mean, it's that experience that he found really what he was passionate about, and now he's very successful at that in Chicago. So I think we have to find ways to engage kids and give them experiences besides just talking to them and them reading about us. So I really appreciate that, and we look forward to continuing to partner with you. And I agree, somebody said, you know, "We need to get this exposure down to our middle school." And I said this for some time now, that CTEC's a great first step, but until we start exposing our middle school kids to these types of programming, it's going to be difficult, even though I can't complain that we had 1,600 kids involved in our pathways out there. But, so we're still, that's what we struggle with, is finding the funding to bring back some of that programming that we have, that we need to start exposing them younger, and we'll continue to work on that piece. But I just appreciate your partnership and look forward to working with you in the future, as do we. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, before we move to consent, I do want to bring attention, if you look at item 406, Human Resource Act, and I just want to call it to your attention that, I think it's to the very bottom, we did have...
to the very bottom, we did have Jane Smith, a special education professional for the district for quite some time, passed away on October twenty-first and we appreciate her eighteen years of service to the district and serving our students and, so we just wanted to recognize her tonight in our Human Resource Action.
Consent agenda, this is an action item. Are there any items board members would like to remove for separate consideration? Mr. Schlesner?
Like to remove item 411 for discussion.
Any others? Hearing none, we can vote on the remaining items, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the remaining items.
More approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Schlesner?
411, the approval of Longfellow 4515 district-wide option neighborhood school. For the, for the items presented to us two weeks ago, I'm supportive of everything the administrator at the school would like to do. What I'd like to talk about, hopefully as a board, is that we know as a community, it was very clear last year when there was a larger community discussion around 4515, that there is a desire within our community for that model. And I feel when Longfellow moves to the, the neighborhood first district-wide second option, that we're essentially removing an option from a district of what the community has voiced a desire for. So I'm hoping that the, the administration within the school can come up with an option for what our community is, has been asking for. There was a lot of support from other schools as well when there was discussion of expanding a program, even in the middle school.
So.
Mr. Smith?
So, I understand what you're asking, so you're, you're asking for a, an expansion of forty-five, or the consideration of forty-five, expansion of 4515?
I'm asking.
Because there were a number of community members who expressed interest in that and I'm just wondering how this, this particular item, as, as outlined here, you know, how these, these two correlate together?
The correlation is, is in my opinion, this is a removal of the option since there's more students within the neighborhood area that will fill all the available seats than are left for district-wide choices.
I see, okay, thank you.
My understanding though is that the neighborhood, by neighborhood within walking distance of Longfellow, that those parents will have the option to have a neighborhood lottery first, after which it would be open to the district-wide. So it's, it's not a case of we're making a decision that all of the kids in the neighborhood are now going to go to Longfellow for the 4515. So, and I have no idea how many, if any, of those students within the walking area of Longfellow were, had applied and were, did not get in on the last go-round. I don't know how much you delved into that, but.
So, so I would take based on that, that really what we're doing is we are expanding the opportunity for 4515, it's just in this case, it's, it's limited to those within the walking distance of Longfellow now and they will get a first priority preference to increasing the number of students who are at 4515.
I, I don't think I'd call it an expansion since the same number of seats are the same number of seats. And when you look at the numbers that were presented to us, the, when you take brothers and sister option first, which we've always done with the choice schools, that left twenty-two seats for the neighborhood students. And if you look at what is in the school now, it was well beyond that twenty-two. In fact, I believe as presented to us, there were a couple dozen more students, if, well, for example, if all the students in the neighborhood wanted to go to the school, there's not even enough seats for them. So it's definitely not an expansion of the program, it's just a reprioritization, which is fine, I'm supportive of that, but again, our, our community has stated that they liked the option and that we should have something for them.
Ms. Marvin?
Mr. Schlesner, I'm, I'm sensitive to what you're saying and I think you bring up a good point there. Two things though, Longfellow, the, the administration and the staff have been encouraging this change for quite a bit of time. They, they've studied it, they believe in it, they think that this is the right way to go for their school. And I'm generally convinced that if the entire staff of a school has come up with a program that they believe is right for their neighborhood, for their kids, for their building, that we should pay attention. The other thing is that it's, you know, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, it was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago or last month, and I don't know that we've had any communication from people in the community saying that they don't want this to happen. So I'm, I'm a little reluctant to, to just second guess everybody else and saying, "Well, because the board is reluctant."
Well, and again, let me be clear, as I agree with everything you're saying, if this is, I, I think it is a good program, I mean, people recognize that. I'm not saying we should not allow it happen, I completely agree we should for the school, this is what the school wants. What I'm saying is I'm requesting the district find another option for the families that like the option, but aren't gonna be provided the option.
Well, and are you suggesting that we find that option before voting on this?
No.
Or that we vote on this and then see if there is?
See where it goes, yes.
Mr. Barlow?
So, to help me more better understand the point you're making, the, those who you're thinking may be anticipated, I'm, I'm sorry, impacted, are those who may be previously expressed a desire to participate in 4515?
Yes.
Not necessarily in the Longfellow program, but a 4515 at some other location or, so I'm clear in understanding that.
Correct.
And, so, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Just a couple of things, having survived three community meetings on the 4515 and a listening post that was pretty much all about 4515, I think the people who were against expanding were probably more vocal than those who wanted it expanded. I personally heard more from those who were against it than wanting to expand for a variety of reasons. I mean, we got challenged about, there's no data or research that shows that, you know, it had academic results, to, don't mess with my vacation time. However, I will agree that internally, there's huge support within staff, which I think we shared with you, but when we went out to the community and had those public meetings and some of the board members were at those, I believe there was more support for not expanding than there was to expand. I do, and I, we didn't, I'll be honest, we didn't spend a lot of time looking at the data because at our last meeting, I thought the consensus was we didn't need it to make a decision on this, but if we decide to look at this other sites, you would want the data. But quickly, we did pull the this year's students who applied for kindergarten and then we drew the imaginary neighborhood line, just like Longfellow did, and we had six students that applied that lived within one of our choice school boundaries. Four of those six applied for multiple district-wide option schools, two of them only applied for their neighborhood school. So we had six out of several who applied, but only six of them lived within that neighborhood area. Another factor that as a parent, we're taking new kindergarteners. Most of them will have older siblings, so they're gonna have to make the decision, "Do I wanna split my kids up?" And in my experience is most families don't wanna do that. So I don't believe, and I could be wrong, that all of the open seats after we've done sibling preference is gonna be taken up by neighborhood kids. I could be wrong, I don't know, I just, I, I know they're gonna have to make a decision. Do I want my kindergartner to go to Longfellow and my fourth grader to go to Bamber Valley or Franklin or wherever? So, that, that's a decision that the parents are gonna have to make, but that's, like I said, we didn't spend a lot of time digging into the previous year, but just looking real quickly at those who applied this year from kindergarten, there were only six kids that applied, so I know you're looking at one year's data, but really it didn't seem that applying for it because it's close was a priority for them.
Mr. Smith?
I didn't, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Schlesner, but I didn't hear him objecting to approving this, what he's saying is he wants, he would like to understand, I think what I'm hearing that, how many, how many students or how many students do we have possibly who are interested in 45, in district-wide that, you know, given the number of seats that we have for it, what's the difference between, that are we talking about six students, ten students, twenty students, a hundred and fifty students or whatever and then, or is that data we don't, we can't put our hands on?
You mean how many next year kindergarteners live in, live in that area right now?
Yeah, I just, no, I don't think it says regardless of area, that we have so many 4515 seats in the, in schools. And how many, what do we know about how many people have expressed interest in that 4515 schedule who are not in that program today? What's that number? Is that, is that a small number or is it a large number? And then if we knew what the number was, maybe there's some of the, what you're, I hear you ask for, is there a way we take a look at that, is there a way to accommodate that, some other configuration or, or scheduling, whatever we might be able to do to accommodate those who, who do have an interest? So, I didn't hear you saying you're rejecting to this, you just wanna use the opportunity, you wanna use the opportunity to say, "Let's revisit, let's revisit this and make sure we're, provide as much opportunity to this as we can."
Correct, and, you know, I was at those community forums as well and I think some of the, the folks against it were under the, the false assumption that the discussion was around district-wide when it was not. I talked to a number of the folks myself who were against the expansion and that's what their assumptions were. It was not for them, not for the kids and I fully support families' choices and the style of school they wanna send their children to. I made that choice myself as a parent, having sent my daughters to a choice school. But it was clear that there are a number of folks that do like the option. Even if we look at the current numbers, there's twenty-two families who were choice within the district that have siblings coming back. When the administrator was here, there were more applicants than there were seats. There's clearly a demand for it and I'm just saying, yes, I'm supportive of this action tonight, but I want the district to look at the option, perhaps at another location as well.
And we, we have done that, actually twice. We did it in two thousand and twelve when we did the boundary work. If you recall, we were looking at creating district-wide option schools north of the city and the same one south of the city. And what we heard from a majority of the people is we do not wanna lose our neighborhood school. And then we broke it down, if you remember, we were even thinking about putting Core Nolids within, school, within the school at Bamber, that got shot down. And then again, during 4515 discussions, we didn't say it was gonna be district-wide, we said it could be, it could be another site, it could be just a middle school because we were hearing a lot from, if you remember, we even had a discussion about adding on a classroom or two at Longfellow so then the sixth graders could do, so we.
Yep.
We were pretty open to what we were looking at. I, I agree, there were probably some who thought we meant district-wide because I know there's staff that would love it to be district-wide. I just don't think the dialogue's gonna change and it did last spring, but that doesn't mean the board could say, "You know what, we're gonna make a decision, we're gonna expand it." You don't have to do what a squeaky wheel says, you can say if you wanna do it, you, we do it.
I'd like to reframe a little bit what I think I'm hearing, looking at this transition plan proposal. So there are thirty-seven incoming kindergarten students who have siblings attending Longfellow and so those siblings would have preference over everybody else because they have siblings. So, assuming that all of them, all of those thirty-seven siblings wanted to be at Longfellow, there would be twenty-one open spots. The concern that I'm hearing is that perhaps there are parents out there who have children who are three or four, five years old, who have no kids in the system at this point, who have been kind of counting on being able to participate in the district-wide lottery and now all of a sudden those twenty-one spots might shrink or totally disappear when the neighborhood option happens first. I have not heard personally anyone with a child who's not yet in kindergarten has not called me and said, "I'm really worried or upset about this." It may happen that there are people we will hear from after the fact, but as far as I'm concerned, I think there's no reason not to go ahead with, with this program as currently stated for next year. We don't know if any of the neighborhood kindergarten parents are gonna want their kids at Longfellow next year for some of the reasons that Mr. Munoz just articulated, but we don't know. What I'm really, really impressed with is how Longfellow and the RPS bilingual specialists will be creating communication in first languages of the families to share this option and that they will be having a new neighborhood option application, which will be developed and made accessible to neighborhood families. So, these folks will really be targeted, is maybe the, not quite the right word, will certainly be informed and well-educated by the Longfellow staff and, and our bilinguals as to this opportunity. I think part of the problem is that maybe people have felt that the neighborhood students who get on those buses and leave the Longfellow area every morning really haven't been exposed to it as much as they would like to have and that the staff really feel strongly that those are, are kids who could really benefit from the program if they knew more about it, so that's, that's sort of how I hear it.
I have some data here that maybe this is what you're asking for. This is this year's kindergarten pool. We look at Montessori program, there were thirty-five seats open. We had eighty-three kindergartner applicants, so twenty-nine point seventy-five percent got in. We look at GATE, Spanish immersion, there's forty seats, we had fifty-eight applicants, sixty-eight point nine percent got in. Lincoln, we had fifty seats, a hundred and twenty-eight applicants, thirty-nine percent got in. Longfellow, we had fifty-eight seats, eighty-eight applied, had a sixty-five point nine percent acceptance. And Washington had fifty-eight seats, a hundred and forty applied, with a forty-one point four percent acceptance. So that's kinda gives you the rundown of how many people applied for the different.
And some of those, and some of those, those people may have applied for one or more of those options.
Most likely.
So it's not necessarily all, all different people.
Right.
And again, I, I think you touched on a really good point of just trying to get this information out to our community that this change is happening, so we have the opportunity to hear from our community what they do and don't want. The first time it was brought to this board was two weeks ago, so I'm personally not sure how much our community is aware this change is gonna happen.
Ms. Haley?
I have a few questions, not on the current topic. Would you like those now?
Of Longfellow?
Yes.
Okay. Which is all the Longfellow's, we're on the.
We're on Longfellow.
Of Longfellow, because this is four point eleven that we're discussing.
Yes, no, we're totally on Longfellow. So, Mr. Munoz, you, you talked about the sibling, are, so is it, is it, will, will it be a hard and fast rule that siblings will not be accepted or if, can they apply for an exception if there is room in that grade level?
We don't do exceptions for choice schools, our district-wide option schools. They could apply and let's say, a fourth grader moves out of town, then a spot opens up and then whatever fourth grade applicants we have, we run it through the system, kicks out a person and then they would get that seat. So, if I have incoming kindergarten and I have an older sibling, you can apply, but unless there's an open seat, you, you will, you couldn't have a chance to get in.
And it won't matter if, if you put your kindergarten and your fourth grader in the lottery and the fourth grader got in the lottery, that you're not gonna, you're gonna bring your kindergarten in.
Right, yeah.
Got it, thank you. One more question on that. So, what, what I was trying to get at, and maybe it was discussed last time, but I was, I was thinking in a forward way and so if this transition plan is for eighteen, nineteen, we have thirty-seven confirmed kindergarten spots for our siblings, twenty-one, twenty-one open spots. So, is, is the intention then that we will keep expanding that and then theoretically at some point, there would be very few sibling kindergarten spots taken, say in five years as the children who are currently in their age out?
Could be, yep.
Mr. Smith?
Just wanna think, it sounded like, I didn't do the math when you read all the body that applied, it sounded like there was a couple hundred, two hundred and fifty maybe total and those aren't necessarily unique, unique, those are, those are duplicates and it sounded like at least a hundred or more got accommodated some way. So, what, if we're talking about everybody that signed up, it's, it's, I don't know, we probably know, but you could. So what, if we're talking about everybody that signed up, it's, it's, I don't know, we probably know, but you could probably give us a specific number if you look beyond that. But it sounds like it's less than 100 or so people that somehow weren't accommodated. And out of 17,000 students, you know, you got, we have to weigh everything on, on the balance of, you know, the overall, the overall system. I'm not saying, make that as an argument, we shouldn't look at it, but I think we do need to put it in perspective. So having the data, I think, to kind of know how many unique students are we talking about who had some interest in something other than where they're at today that didn't get fulfilled? That'll at least give us some more information to look at and decide whether or not that warrants any further, you know, kind of deeper dive into looking at what people might, may or may not want that didn't, didn't get it. But I certainly support the, the recommendation as, as stated tonight, but I think we can look a little deeper. As we did, we've been a district, historically has tried to accommodate people's desires for different type of education thing. So I don't think we need to apologize to that, but I think, you know, it, sometimes it's, it's not a perfect system, and it's hard to do all that when you, when you, when you, you know, weigh, weigh the numbers. So, but I think to the extent that we're looking at it and, and continuing taking a look at that, it's probably a good thing for everybody involved.
The other thing I'd say for clarification there, Mr. Smith, this would be a 100 out of the incoming kindergarten class instead of the entire population of the school district.
Yeah, that's true.
I'd just like to make an observation. I had the opportunity to be at the kickoff for kindergartners a couple of weeks ago, and I fortunately was able to visit with quite a few of the principals and other people who were behind the tables. Not everybody, because some of them were, quite frankly, very, very busy. But I was so impressed with the quality of our neighborhood schools and our choice schools that I would hope that when parents select a program for their child, it's because they really want Montessori education, not, well, I have to get my kid out of my neighborhood school. Because in, in Mr. Smith, I know we've had this conversation quite frequently about, you know, the excellence that we are seeing in our neighborhood schools. So I would just like to make that point, that even if, even if a student doesn't get into a choice school, especially if they've applied to all four of them, that they're not going to be receiving a substandard education by being in one of our neighborhood schools. Because they're all unique, and they're wonderful schools, and I really applaud the principals and the staff and the parents who, who keep them that way. Any other discussion? There are none, all those?
Need to move to approve.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay.
All those in favor of, do I have to approve it first?
Those in favor of approving?
All those in favor of approving?
Do I have to read the resolution?
Yeah. No, there is no resolution.
It's a consent. It's a consent item, so to approve item, what's the, what's the number? 4.11. 4.11, move to approve item 4.11.
All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Marching ahead. Thank you. Moving right along. High student achievement. 5.02 equity update, this is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, just want to give the board a little update on where we are. As far as professional development, we continue to provide envoy training for K-8 teachers and a condensed version to our peer professionals. We continue to work with Dr. Holly on cultural responsive classrooms, and he will be coming different times throughout the school year. And we just learned last week at, when we were at one of our middle schools' data presentations, that they, he's coming for a couple of days for that school to do classroom observations and provide feedback for the teachers. So we continue to work with, with him, and I anticipate we may continue to work with him next year. And potentially, it looks like we may move into historical trauma as well. As far as site plans, I'm not sure if I shared with you, something new we did this year is we required each site, besides having an academic goal, they had to have a behavior goal. So we've been learning about the various behavior goals that the sites have as they give their data presentation to the cabinet. And then I would like to give you just a summary of the October 20th OCR report that we received, which is on our website. If you go under our equity section, and then the actual letter is there. Just going to try to touch the highlights for you. The first one is item one, which is we were to publish the name and contact information of our district supervisor, or discipline supervisor, and also put that on the website and behavior handbook. And the feedback we received from OCR is based on the information provided. OCR determined that the district has complied in full with item one. Item two is written confirmation that PBAS framework is being implemented. We, district continues to implement PBAS at every site. And 10 district representatives, and I was one of those representatives that were able to attend the 2017 National PBAS Leadership Forum in September. And the discipline supervisor continues to meet with building principals on a monthly basis to evaluate their discipline data. The feedback we received from OCR is based on the information provided. OCR determined that the district has complied with item two. Item three requires the district to provide information from student school board meetings and information about changes made in response to recommendations that the student may, suggested. Based on information provided, OCR determined that the district has complied in full with item three. Item four, provide documentation of any recommendations, suggestions, and reports made by the PBAS team. The feedback we received based on the information provided, OCR determined that the district has complied in full with item four. Items five and seven both address the handbook. Five and seven contain several specific requirements the handbook was to meet. Previous version complied with certain specific requirements. However, our most recent revised handbook addresses all remaining requirements of items five and seven, with the exception to 7H. The handbook does not clearly describe the circumstances that must be present for administrators in the case of an emergency or school staff to report a student's conduct to a police liaison officer. We are scheduled to do, our attorney is scheduled to do a conference call with OCR on Thursday to get that matter resolved. We believe in our contract agreement we have with the police department, it stays right in there that they can only be involved when a student has broke the law, which they do have a copy of the agreement, so we're hoping we can get that worked out. We may, in the revision of the handbook, we may need to put that statement in the handbook that explains when they will be used. Item six, place a link on its PBAS website to OCR civil rights data collection data for the district and a link to updated data concerning referrals for discipline, suspension, expulsion, and referrals to law enforcement. Based on the information provided, OCR determined that the district has complied in full with number six. Item eight, maintain at each site a system of supports to assist students who display inappropriate behavior. Based on the information provided, OCR determined that the district has complied in full with item eight. Items 12 and 13 collect data regarding disciplinary referrals, dismissals, and reports to law enforcement and conduct, conduct an annual evaluation as to whether it is implementing its student discipline policies, practices, and procedures in a non-discriminatory manner. Item 15 requires the district to examine annually how disciplined referrals occur at each school compared to those at other district schools. Based on the information provided, OCR determined that the district's actions to date with respect to items 12, 13, and 15 are consistent with the terms of the agreement. OCR will continue to monitor. Item 16, required that each school principal meet annually with teachers at each school to discuss data gathered under item 12. Based on the information provided, OCR determined that the district's actions to date with respect to item 16 are consistent with the terms of the agreement. OCR will continue to monitor. Item 18, require the district to submit, and changes proposed to be made to its discipline policy practices and procedures. Based on the information we provided, OCR, they have determined that district's actions to the, to date with respect to item 18 are consistent with the agreement. They will continue to monitor. They also had a statement that OCR thanks the district and its legal counsel for its work on its August 15th and October monitoring report. I personally would like to thank all the staff of the district and buildings for their time and effort putting in all of this work. The entire report can be found, as I said, on the district website under Equity, Culture, Responsiveness. I would like to point out, even though it's a very positive report from OCR, does not mean that our work is finished. We still have a lot of work to do, we'll continue to work on this, but it was nice to get a positive report back from OCR. And I do believe on that phone call on Thursday, we'll be able to get that one minor little matter taken care of rather quickly.
Mr. Barlow?
Quick question regarding item six, discipline data from 2016-17. And the reference to the August 15th data provided on the school district website. Were any of your fears realized once the data was disaggregated by race and school and grade? I know initially there was great concern initially that that might occur, and, and since this has been published and made available, have any of your staff, principals expressed concern or alarm?
I, I do know when there, last year, there was a lot of concern by staff because of all of the attention that was going on. And there were, to be honest with you, there were individuals in our community that were accusing people of intentionally doing things. And so there was some concern, maybe concern is not the right word, but felt a little pressure, which I think is okay. I, I think it's kind of calmed down. We still, I have to be honest with you, we still continue to have to provide a lot of information to OCR, and it is a lot of work, not only on the district staff, but on the building site to collect. What we've done is created a, one of my favorite things, a Google Docs site, where we can dump everything in there. For example, when the student school board members sit down with their building principals monthly, they have to keep notes of that meeting, and then they submit it, and then we have to submit it to OCR. And then the meetings that off the lobby has with building principals, he has to keep notes, and we collect that and submit all of that. So it has been a challenge for those individuals to do that and their, their other work. But I think they understand the, the importance of it, and I'll be honest with you, the, probably the most positive feedback we've received is that the changes in the handbook have encouraged more conversation between teachers and principals about discipline, because they're having conversations about those situations and discussing, for example, a, a teacher may think this is a level two, and it's a level one. So then the principal has a conversation with that teacher and discusses that behavior. So that's been very positive, but it has been a challenge for us to collect and submit. And then we send it to our legal counsel, and they put it all together nicely and send it to OCR. And so it has been a lot of work, but I think it's been good work, and, but we're not done. I mean, we still have a lot of training to do. We'll continue to monitor our data, not only monthly. We, as a district staff, the cabinet, we actually talked about it today at our cabinet meeting, we look at it on a regular basis as well. And then in, in the first semester, we will bring the results to the board from our first semester of, of office referrals and suspensions. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? You've got to talk a lot. 5.03, approval of 2018-29-19 course, offering changes. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to have Mrs. Jane Gibson, Executive Director, Kirkman Instruction, brief us on this item.
Good evening, members of the board. Now that we're into November, that means it's time for us to start thinking of the school year 18-19. So what you have before you this evening is the course recommend, or course catalog that has been recommended for students to use as registration for the 18-19 school year. A couple of things that I would like to point out to you. I'm bringing before you tonight the course catalog in paper format, the way you're most familiar to do, or most familiar in seeing that. A couple of the things that we've been intentional about changing in the content of the catalog. On page six and seven, we really spent some time trying to make some sense of how students and families could benefit from obtaining free college credit while still in high school. There are a lot of different ways to obtain college credit, and it can get very confusing. So we had it articulated in the guide before. This just seemed to be a little bit of a cleaner way to do it. And then on pages 10 and 11, and ironically, the conversation that happened earlier this evening really alludes to this about what is post-high school planning? And before, a lot of the focus was on four-year institutions, which is great. That does play an instrumental role for many of our students. However, we have other students that, that the four-year college may not be as, as relevant or pertinent information for them. Although we want every one of our students to be college and career-ready, which would mean they would have the option, we want them to know of the different options. So we've redone this particular area to include the more selective four-year colleges, the University of Minnesota, Minnesota State Universities, which many of us know as the Minskew Systems, Community College, vocational and technical schools and colleges, as well as what it looks like to enter the workforce immediately after high school. And then, of course, the armed forces or the military service, which is my favorite. But, and we also have the Minnesota Career Fields and Cluster Pathways chart. It looks much nicer on the, the computer or on the electronic version, because it is nice and clean and colorful. But it does put it down into a pathway, so it kind of takes the opportunity to say, hey, if you're kind of interested in business, here are some of the actual fields within business, and then these are what are some of the jobs within business. So we've really tried to outline and, and define that a little bit more clear and clean. With that said, in terms of the content of the courses, you will notice that we went through and we did a lot of name changes in this particular version of the catalog. We really worked closely to try to align the names with institutes of higher ed, as well as what are fields outside of education. So instead of, for example, floral design and arrangement, it's just floral design, because that's really what horticulture programs talk about. So a lot of our programs, you'll notice, they're not necessarily new courses, they just are renamed courses. There are some exceptions to that that I want to be sure that I point out. And that, again, is expanding the opportunities for students to obtain college credit. So we are introducing three new classes that are going to be offered in partnership with our CTC. And they will be offered at the CTEC campus for two of them, and at our main high school campuses for the other one. The, I'll start with English 1117, reading and writing critically. That is equivalent to a freshman English. When we looked at our data of our PSEO students, that was the single course that more students were leaving our campus and enrolling in when they went to our CTC. It is actually a course that we used to offer here on our campus, and so we are in partnership now trying to bring it back to all three of our high schools. Brand new to us is within the, the arena of information technology. We're introducing both courses tonight, however, only one course will run the 18-19 school year, and then alternating years, the other course will run. So mobile app development is comp 1751, and then JavaScript is comp 1741. So in the 18-19 school year, students will have the opportunity to sign up for the mobile app development course. And then in the 1920, JavaScript, and we'll continue to alternate so that we're not putting too many options out and not allowing students to get into any of them, because we don't have enough classes to run. The other additional course that we've added is a Vet Studies II. And that is by the request of our students, we have a number of students that come through Vet Studies and want a second pathway, want the continued opportunity to work in that field or learn more about that field. We continue to work with our CTC to get articulated college credit offered in that area, and so that is a brand-new course. And so that is a brand-new course to us. And then we will be, and this is a course that we actually removed from the catalog a few years ago when we redid our science structure. We will be bringing astronomy back only at Mayo and only for the one semester option for a couple of reasons. The biggest reason being that students are requesting it, and the second biggest reason being we have an amazing planetarium over there that we want to make sure that we fully utilize. And so we're really trying hard to get the courses equal across all three of our schools when appropriate. But when you have a facility like that, it just makes sense. So we will be introducing that back into our course guide. Other than that, the only other thing I have to talk to you or introduce to you tonight is in December, as part of our communications, you will see this course guide as an electronic. That will actually, in the past, we've used paper as the main venue or the main platform for course guides to go out, course catalogs to go out. This year, when students use the course catalog to get information to register, they won't be registering electronically, but they will be able to use their phone or their iPad or their computer to see the courses that are opt, or that are available to them. It will offer such features as I can go in and I can say, okay, I am a junior at this particular high school and I need a science credit that's still required or whatever. And it will filter down and show me the options that will meet that requirement. It's still somewhat in beta format in terms of, there's a lot of things that we would love to continue to grow and expand on it. But for right now, it's just super exciting to have something for our students that will have immediately, immediate access on the electronic platform. They can drill down and see the different courses and the different options, as well as obtain any of the information that we currently house in our paper copy. That will be, we're working on finalizing some of that now, and so we will introduce that to you in December. The content in there will be the exact same as the content that I'm presenting to you tonight.
And we will be having some paper copies at different locations, the media center office and so on, so counselor's office, so students that do want a paper copy can get one.
Miss Gibson, I have a question for you. For the AP placement or the AP courses, if a student wants to take the exam, there is a cost to that. Do we have any way for students who may find that to be a barrier to be able to take the cost anyway? Because it would really be a shame if you had a student who's really enrolled and done well in a whole bunch of AP tests then to be stopped, to have the barrier of, well, I can't take the test.
Yeah, we do have scholarship dollars for families or for students that need a little bit of help or need support for the AP costs.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Out of curiosity, will the mobile app development be offered at each of the high schools or only at CTEC?
It will be offered at CTEC for a couple of reasons. The predominant reason is that the nature of the course is one that it will benefit the student to have a little bit of a longer block than just the typical 50 minutes that we find in our comprehensive high schools. The second thing is, we have, at this point in time, we only have one teacher that's been approved by our CTC to teach that particular course. And so this way, it gives students for all three of our comprehensive high schools, plus our ALC, the opportunity to get that instruction.
Ms. Gibson, when does this need to go to print? And would you like us to make it go a little, to print a little bit faster tonight? I mean, I assume nothing's going to be changing in the content of this guide.
Nothing should change. We did plan ahead. So, I mean, if it sits till December 12th, that's just fine as well. We planned accordingly to be sure, so.
Thank you. Okay, yes, World's Best Workforce Plan Update. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Ms. Gibson will also brief us on this item.
Well, good evening, members of the board, once again. It's that time of year, we get the opportunity to bring the world's best workforce forward to you. And so, as you know, back in 2013, state law said that every district is required to develop a plan that threads all of their district-level plans together around these five areas. So this is embedded into our title plan, our federal programs plan, integration revenue, our staff development, all of the plans. And ultimately, we hope that it influences and is influenced by our strategic plan when that is all said and done. So within those five areas, each year, we establish goals and we establish strategies. Everybody plays a role. Director Workman talked earlier about the CCIA CWBWF Committee, and it really is a real thing. And this, I know. So this committee of individuals that come together and give their time to help us ensure that we've got things together. So we have a public meet, we held a public meeting on June 15th and got a lot of wonderful insight. We will continue to meet. We've got four meetings throughout the course of this year. I will put a little plug in now, and I'll plug in again later for continued participation and enrollment in that because everyone plays a role. It's not just the educators, it's our community members as well. But ultimately, call it what you want, but the goal of the plan is student learning, and that's really what we're talking about, is preparing our students to be successful, not just within the K-12 or E-12 system, but what happens after they leave us. And so the first thing they want to look at is all children ready for school. And so within that, as you know, all children ready for school, we currently are using a diagnostic tool that was created here internally, looking at eight different factors that our kindergarten teachers said, here is what our students need to be successful. And although, yes, these are some definite academic points, they've helped, been very helpful for us. One of the goals that we're really going to do and spend time on this year will be looking at this tool because there's also features of success or readiness once you come to kindergarten that aren't measured here. So what about that social-emotional readiness? What about some of the just cognitive readiness, such as, do I know how to hold a paper book? Or do I know how to hold the pencil and the scissors and get some of that stuff together and ready? So there's other things that we really want to take a look at. Increased early childhood programming is certainly one of our goals and is going to help us continue to work in this. Outreach and family engagement opportunities, and then incredible partnerships within our community. And Amy talked a little bit about the number of partnerships that we have across the community, and a lot of them are in early childhood as well. So even though at this point, in these particular readiness skills, only thirty, just over 30% of our students demonstrate readiness in all eight areas, our goal is to get that up to 35%. But we also want to make sure that we're using the right tool. So that will be a focus of ours this particular school year. Our third graders, reading at or above grade level, we know that, a lot of research out there tells us that third grade is that key point for us. It really is an indicator to tell us a lot about our students. And so as we take a look at our students at the third grade level, and this is measured according to all of the proficiency tests that students take at the end of third grade. So it's either the MCA or the MTAS. And you can see that although we had just over 57% of our students, when you looked in the all-students category, there was some discrepancy when you broke it down into the different ethnic or subgroups that we look at for this type of work. So we look at the different ethnicities, but we also look at diversity along the lines of free and reduced, or special education, or EL. We have some work to do here, and we recognize that. So as we work on this, we're going to continue our professional development around the area of balanced literacy, really taking a look at literacy leadership training for our administrators and focusing on what is happening in the classroom. We know that the resource is important. We know that the schedule that shows on the paper is important. But when it really comes to it, what is happening in the classroom? What does that interaction between student and teacher or student and student look like? So we're going to spend a lot of time drilling in on that. The other area that we look at is closing the achievement gap. And in this particular area, we use what is called our ACT 22 pathway. This uses the MWA, their spring score, and it really takes a look at, if you're on this trajectory, will you get a 22 on your ACT? We use 22 on the ACT because that's what they tell us means you're college-ready, you're ready to be successful at the collegiate level. This is our math scores here, and this, again, we look at it by all subgroups. What I'm showing tonight here is just by ethnicity. And green demonstrates proficiency, and red demonstrates not proficient. So when we say proficiency or not proficient, it means that you're either on trajectory to reach that 22 when you take the ACT, or you're not. And you can see that there is a discrepancy in our math. I will point out that we have spent more time focusing on reading instruction than math instruction. Not an excuse, just the reality of where we are, and we are focusing now on math because of data such as this. But when you get to the reading, again, we have some work to do, but our numbers are a little closer. We want those to be no more than 10% discrepancy. That's really the goal. We want all students to be performing at the highest level. And so not only do we want to bring these bars more within reason, but we want them also to all be shifted up a little bit higher across the boards, that everybody is exceeding their, at high levels. We then have all students are college and career-ready. And again, we look at that ACT. So we do some, a lot of work with the ACT 22, which is the readiness for the ACT exam. And then, one day a year, we are at our high school levels. The ninth, 10th, and 12th graders don't come to school because our 11th graders participate in the ACT. And so we get a lot of data back around the ACT. We get data back about any students that took it, regardless of grade level. If they were an RPS student, we get the data back from that. And we also get the data just from that one snapshot date. And so this happens to be the data from the day that the students tested with us. You can see that about 88% of our juniors came that day to test. We would like that number, and we're going to encourage our students, encourage our teams to get that number up a little bit higher. We want that number to be closer to 99 or 100% of our students taking the ACT. It is free, it's given to them on a school day. So we really want all students to come through the door, whether they plan to go to college or not. We want them to be ready and know what this looks like for them. So you can see, we often talk about, we're designed exquisitely to get the results that we get. When we're this consistent, we're designed pretty efficiently. I mean, we're, which, we are doing okay, but we can do better than this. And so some of the things that we're really talking about and looking at in terms of here is really offering more college credit-bearing courses, getting greater numbers of students into the exposure of that higher-level rigor, rigorous coursework, getting college credit, and continuing to refine the middle-level programming to ensure that conversations about some of the college and career readiness types of things are being, are happening sooner. And then finally, graduation. We want at least 95% of our students to graduate. The good news, as you look at this, and graphs like this are always way too busy, they just make, you know, but I think visually you can see, from left to right, is just the school year, starting in 2013 and going to 2016. The trend for each of the groups tends to be either plateau or going up. So that is a good thing. We have some dips and loops and some craziness in some of the categories, but again, you're looking at different cohorts of students. We often get asked, well, this is the four-year graduation rate. What happens if you go into a fifth year or a sixth year, which we do track? So, for example, our class of 2012, these are the students that were scheduled to graduate in 2012, and 82% of them did. Well, by year five, we picked up another 5.5%, so we were now up, or 5%. So we were up to 86.2%. I guess that's not 5, 4%. And then by the sixth year, we got up to 87. So in total of that class of 2012, just over 87.7% did graduate, some of them at the four-year mark, some at the five, and some at the six-year mark. So you can kind of see that, how it goes. It's typical, we don't pick up leaps and bounds of continuing students, but we do pick up anywhere usually from 3% to 6% of our students will stick with it and continue either at the ALC, or at Hawthorne, or at some of our other program options, and they will end up graduating. And so kudos to them for their perseverance and continuing to go. So how are we making this all work, or what are we doing? The professional development around this has been really taking a look at working with all students and providing students opportunities, putting voice and choice into our classroom. You hear Superintendent Munoz talk a lot about the envoy strategies, talk a lot about culturally and linguistically relevant teaching practices. That has been the focus of this year. It's been amazing. And thank you to you for us having the five full days to accomplish the things we've done. We've been able to really focus on math instruction, as well as, you've heard, some in our parent groups are getting into it, as well as just the mindset around what it takes to be successful. So with that said, we'll continue our work, we'll continue to work with the CCIA C. Here are some dates. Again, it's January 15th is our next meeting. We meet at 5:30 in the evening at CTEC, and we would love to have more people join us. So that was a lot of information, but that's all I got. Awesome.
We will take a brief recess at 7:17.
Thank you.
Convening at 7:24 PM. Efficient and Effective Operations, Approval of Audit Report for 2016-2017 Fiscal Year. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carsland, Executive Director of Finance, and Ms. Kim Hilbert, CPA from Clifton-Larson Allen, will brief us on this item.
Good evening, board members. We're here to give you the final financial statements and hear about the audit process that we just finished up for the year that ended June 30th, 2017. So I'll turn it over to Kim, and she will share the news with you.
Thank you, members of the board, for having me here this evening to go through audit results. We're going to kind of hit a few highlights, and then we're going to get into some financial information shortly thereafter. We, as auditors, kind of focus on the opinion of the financial statements because that's really what you hire us to do, is provide an opinion on your financial statements. We are issuing what's called a clean or an unmodified opinion on your financial statements, the highest mark that you can receive, the same as we have in the past. So no change there. We did not have anything in terms of material weaknesses that we noted as a result of the audit overall for your policies and procedures, so a very clean report. Once again, we did audit your federal grant programs, as we have in the past. This year, we looked at your child nutrition cluster, as well as your Title I program. That amounted to about half of your federal dollars for the year. You spent about $12.7 million for fiscal '17 and federal dollars, just to give you an idea of what you spent for federal grants. We did have one recommendation in terms of a change in procedure for that, and I understand, and in speaking with John earlier, that you have one in place to take care of that. And then in terms of legal compliance and your student activity funds, nothing there to report either. Everything came out very clean. So good news all around. Financially, we're going to take a look at some PowerPoint slides here to hit some of the highlights. In particular, with the general fund is really what we start with because that's really the main operating fund of the district. You can see for the year into June 30th, 2017, a fund balance decreased just shy of $2.5 million. Now, I want to remind you that was a planned spend-down or planned use of fund balance. You actually came out better than what you had budgeted in terms of your spend-down. So that's a good thing. Your total fund balance closed out the year at $20.5 million in total. We have some restricted or fund balances that are earmarked for specific purposes, whether it's by the state or yourself. Your capital-related restrictions are your long-term facility maintenance, health and safety, and operating capital. facility maintenance, health and safety, and operating capital, and these are all really geared towards more of your high-dollar facility-type needs that you would have. Non-capital-related restrictions are monies that the state provides you for particular purposes, and if that goes unspent in the year that you receive those dollars, you are required to set them aside for those purposes to be used in future fiscal years. So the unrestricted column is the one that we really take a look at closely. The eighteen point two million dollars is actually made up of three components of fund balance, if you will. You have some non-spendable, that's about one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and that relates to anything from prepaid insurance to prepaid conference fees, things of that nature. You have some assigned fund balance that you, as a district, have set aside for use for specific purposes in the upcoming fiscal years, of about two point six million dollars. And then the remainder of that is what we call your unassigned fund balance, and that's what we have the next slide depicting here. So about fifteen point four million dollars was where it closed out in fiscal seventeen, down about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. There again, a planned decrease or planned use in fund balance. We use this particular component of your fund balance in the general fund to measure the overall financial health of the district, or your general fund in particular. We do that by dividing this dollar amount by the annual expenditures in the fund. If we do that, you come out at seven point one percent, and your fund balance policy that you have as a district is to be no lower than six percent. So you're, you got a little bit of a cushion there, if you will.
If I can interrupt, our budget was to be at six point nine percent on the other side, so we finished at seven point one, just a tick above where we thought we would be.
The next slide we have, then, is your food service fund. You can see that continues to do well. I just want to remind you that it's important to have a self-sufficient food service fund in a district, reason being because the general fund would actually have to subsidize that program if this was actually running in the red. And with the general fund needing everything it can to provide dollars for K-12 education, it's very good when you have a food service fund that can hold its own, if you will. Community service fund is the next PowerPoint that we have, and you can see here that we had a decrease as well. This was a planned use of fund balance also, very much more capital-related. You had some worked on, I believe it was Mighty Oaks and Hawthorne, if I'm not mistaken. So those are really good one-time uses of fund balance, because you find something, you use it, and then the idea, then, is at some point in time to be able to build up fund balance again for another specific use later on down the road. One thing I do want to mention, about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's your total community service fund balance, and you have four or five different components of fund balance, and all of those are positive. We don't see that very often. We typically will see districts that have a few positives and one deficit, but you're operating in the black in all areas of your community service fund. Your capital projects fund balance is really just a byproduct of the debt that you issue in any one given year to finance your capital needs, and then the amount of capital expenditures that you incurred during the year for those various projects. So it's kind of a combination of how much you actually issued, and to what extent you were actually completing projects at the end of the fiscal year, which can really vary. Debt service fund balance is next. Closed out the year a little over twelve point seven million dollars. Of that, ten point six million dollars is sitting in what we call an escrow account, that's invested, in particular investments, and those investments will be used in February, February of two thousand eighteen to pay off some debt. So you issued debt at a lower interest rate, which will in turn help save dollars for taxpayers by having lower interest, thereby requiring a lower tax levy to pay off that debt. Your general fund revenue pie chart, then, is the last slide that we have for the evening with financial information. And I really like this one, because it really hits home the point, how very dependent you are upon the state for your financing. You can see just a little over three-quarters of your total general fund revenues come from the state, so anything that they do in terms of formula changes, I know they've been very small over the last several years, or when and how they pay you, can have significant impact on that general fund. The other thing that I always like to highlight here, too, is that when you look at the actual amount of local property taxes, how much that supports the general fund, it's actually a pretty small percentage when you take a look at the total dollars there that's in the mix between state property tax, federal, and other sources as well. I do want to close by saying that the audit went very well this year. We had a couple of new standards that were implemented this year, and we asked a lot of different questions, and for a lot of different information that we haven't for, haven't asked for in the past. And the finance department was very good at getting us the information, and kind of helping us understand your processes and procedures, and not only processing the information, but how they accumulated it as well. So I just want to thank John and his staff for a job well done.
That's it.
So I was sort of waiting for maybe, you know, that was her portion, her portion of it, and then there was going to be your portion of it.
No, I don't have any portion of this, so we'll turn it back to you if you have any specific questions for Kim.
Board members, any questions?
This is a briefing item. I'm assuming the information in it will not change.
It will not.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seven point oh two, renewal of contract for the copy equipment and services at Paper Tiger. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carson will brief us on this item.
Well, good evening again. I'm here to bring forward a contract that's over one hundred thousand dollars, and to tell you a little bit more about it. This is the contract with EO Johnson. They are the provider of our copy machines and the repair of those copy machines, as well as the toner that we use at the Paper Tiger Department, which is located at Facility Services Center. Paper Tiger produces about twenty-one million copies annually for our school districts, buildings. This is about the same as it was five years ago when we entered into the contract. The only thing that's different is back then we had no color copiers, and so of the twenty-one million, they were all black and white back then. Now twenty million about are black and white, and nearly one million have turned into color. So there is a little bit uptick on the cost because of that, and school principals are paying for that out of their site supply budget. We did an extensive study five years ago, starting at this time, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year, was spent looking at different equipment options. We engaged multiple different vendors, looked at different ideas, and at that time, we did a best value process, and we ended up picking EO Johnson to be the vendor for Paper Tiger. We entered into an all-inclusive cost-per-copy contract, so that means basically we just pay for whatever we use. You run twenty-one million copies, they send us a bill for twenty-one million copies. That's to cover the machines, the toner, coming to repair it, and all that. We have five machines at Paper Tiger, and what we've been discussing with EO Johnson is, since this contract expires one year from now, this would be the time where you'd go out and we'd start looking at different options. But I'm bringing forward to you actually an extension instead, to keep the current vendor, keep some of the current machines for three years from today. So basically, extend out another two years. There's a couple reasons for this. One, we were able to negotiate a lower price, so we were able to get a six percent price reduction from the current vendor. Another reason was they were willing to come in and take out two of the machines that have the most copies on them, and give us brand-new machines for the next three years. So that would be a benefit to them and to us, because there's less likelihood they're going to have to come and make repairs on older equipment. Another reason that I'd like to continue with the same contract, same vendor, same equipment, is our staff doesn't have to go through a major transition. They can keep up and running, and not have to be down for a significant period of time or replace all the equipment with potentially a new vendor. So we have a little bit more continuity. And then it's just as well, there's less training there. So the new equipment that would be coming in is the same model, looks the same, feels the same, just runs five more copies per minute for them. So there's not a lot of retraining that needs to go into that. So I am willing to go out and do a year-long study, and look at multiple vendors, and go through that. I just, I don't know that I can guarantee that we would have a six percent price reduction like I can right now. We may get to the end, and maybe it'd be more, maybe it'd be less, but I do feel pretty comfortable with this vendor, with the track record, with the service we've been getting, to recommend that we sign this extension and keep what we have for right now.
I have a question. Are there other instances when we have come to this point in the contract where we have done extensions without?
I believe-
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, so I don't expect you to have a list.
Just off the top of my head, I believe, prior to EO Johnson, we used Xerox, and I believe there was an extension negotiated at that time to keep them on another couple years at that point.
Board members, Ms. Edgar.
The funds used for Paper Tiger are those general funds?
So Paper Tiger operates its own internal service fund. It's kind of a for-profit, nonprofit business, so to speak, where they're charging enough to cover their costs, but it is usually general fund dollars. There's some outside community organizations that use it, so there's community dollars that come into it, very small portion. Some community ed dollars might get mixed in there, but primarily would be general fund dollars coming into Paper Tiger.
I like saving. Thank you. Ms. Becker.
So if we were to agree to this, then it would be an eight-year, so it's eight?
It would be a seven-year.
Seven?
Yep.
I mean, I guess if you're okay, you know, with the extension of the two years, but I think after, you know, after the seven years, I think maybe, you know, it would benefit the district to go out and do like another, you know, big study again, or to, you know, to do the best value process again. But, I mean, because they're, you know, swapping out equipment, and it's a six percent decrease, you know, maybe it's okay at this point just to kind of keep going. But, you know, the six percent was for some sort of reason, you know, so that, so, you know, maybe there's been an upgrade in type of equipment or something, and maybe other, you know, companies have the same. So I'm okay with it for this, but I, you know, I generally feel that the, you know, the competition is a good thing for everybody.
I agree with that, too. And part of the reason why I think the price can go down is when you're only taking two machines, and bringing in two brand-new machines instead of five brand-new machines, they don't have to pay for five brand-new machines and depreciate them in the five-year timeframe, so.
So, looking at the information you have on board docs here, so if we agree to extend the contract, we get new equipment, the price per copy for black and white copies and color copies would both go down?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else? Is this something that can wait?
Yes, it can. We, yeah, no, that's fine. I think we were maybe shooting to replace equipment potentially over the winter break, but we can find some time to do that, too, in January or February.
Thank you.
Yep.
Seven point oh three, approval of ice arena rental from the city of Rochester. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Mark Queesley, Century Activities Director, to brief us on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Mr. Munoz, and Ms. Edgar. Before you is the briefing, our yearly briefing item about ice rental for our three boys hockey teams and our three girls hockey teams for the upcoming season. As you know, our boys hockey team consists of six teams, varsity and junior varsity, and our girls hockey team is just the three varsities. Eighteen-week season. Varsity teams get about an hour and twenty-five minutes, an hour and a quarter of practice. Junior varsities get an hour, and then they have a rate for game times as well, for both boys' games and girls' games. We are not seeing a rate increase for this year from the city of Rochester in the rental, and you'll see the breakdown there for each one of the three high schools. We split it evenly between the three schools of what we're asking for in the rental agreement. Any questions?
Our yours?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Seven point oh four, approval of change order zero zero three for Lincoln K-8 district-wide school indoor air quality project. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Facilities, will brief us on this item.
Good evening, Board members. I'm here to brief you on the approval of change order zero zero three for the Lincoln K-8 district-wide indoor air quality project. On June seventh of two thousand sixteen, you approved the bonds that included actually three projects: Mayo High School rough, Lincoln K-8, and Mighty Oaks indoor air quality, to the tune of over fifteen million dollars. And on February twenty-first, you approved Kraus Anderson to do the Lincoln indoor air quality project piece of this, to the tune of six million two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. On August first of two thousand seventeen, I brought forward to you the change order zero zero one in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand five hundred and two dollars, which was approved. And now I'm bringing forward a change order zero zero three in the amount of two hundred and four thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. And it includes a wide variety of different parts of this, including fire protection upgrades, tertiary piping changes, some casework, some additional painting that was done. And like I stated, it was above the hundred thousand dollar limit, and when it was presented to us, and it's now at two hundred and four thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Is anybody awake? Sorry, I couldn't raise it.
Hope it wasn't me. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point oh five, closed session.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dash zero five subdivision three, I make a motion to move into closed session to discuss potential real estate transactions.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Can we say aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. We are recessing at seven forty-five.
We are reconvening this meeting at seven fifty-eight PM, and we are adjourning this meeting at seven fifty-eight PM.